Atheist Nomads, episode 361. Special not sessions.
The podcast you're about to listen to includes cursing and talking about hoo-haws. Please be advised.
Welcome to another episode of Atheist Nomads. I am Dustin and joining me is Lauren.
Hello.
And I'm gonna go for as close as possible to live the tape with this, uh, because it is late and I am sorry about the episode being late. Um, I spent seventy-six hours as Schrodinger's cat. Pretty sure I didn't have COVID, but didn't have the test result.
Yeah, well, the, at first you definitely thought you did, so.
There was.
Very stressful.
There was the, the, out of the seventy-six hours between getting swabbed and getting the test result, there was, uh, probably about thirty-six hours of that, I was growing in certainty that I didn't have it.
Yeah.
And then finally got the result of not detected.
Yeah, and, uh, started to psychosomatically think that he had symptoms that maybe he didn't, or were attributing them to something that wasn't the case.
Yeah, it can be tough.
And people do that. If you look up the symptoms for COVID-19 and it's pretty generic.
Well, and, and like you've got.
Anybody who suffers from allergies or is having a summer cold
Mm-hmm.
can feel like they're gonna die. And that's scary.
And there's plenty of information out there on how you shouldn't think you have it for some of these other things, like a cold or allergies, and equal amount of information, uh, or equal amounts of information out there about people who were actually positive and misinterpreting it as a cold or allergies. And end of June, allergy season, like serious allergy season is pretty much over. And.
But June itself.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard. Um, so yeah, it was a pretty simple process, though. You got, we did one of those drive-in, uh, nasal swabs. Uh, we were so lucky. Apparently they had been packed and we got there during a break. So we got seen within an hour. While other people were waiting up to three hours in their cars. Can you imagine doing that with a two-and-a-half-year-old in the backseat?
We got so lucky. She.
She was fine.
Entertained herself. She sang. She got a little checkup and she was thrilled.
Oh my gosh, yeah. Doc McStuffins really is prepping her for, uh, a career as a CNA.
Or better.
Or better. Let's start with the CNA.
Yeah, yeah. That's always a good place to, to start with anything medical.
Yes.
Um, but, you know, we're, we're in, like much of the country, um, Idaho is a place where COVID is coming back with a vengeance. Because when you reopen things.
Bars.
People think, oh, that means it's done. We can get back to normal. That was not supposed to be the message.
Well, and that was the message until that last stage. And they reopened, what was it, bars? Gyms?
They, all those were earlier. Those were stage three.
Oh.
We got moved back to stage three minus bars because of how bad the uptick was.
Yeah.
Because when you're going with two-week reevaluation, everything you're seeing is two weeks behind.
Yeah.
So if you make a change, it's going to take about a month for that change's effect to really start percolating through everything. And it could take up to six weeks to actually know what effect that had. But when you keep moving.
Not when it comes to alcohol.
Yeah, that was quick.
Apparently people swamped downtown and just drank themselves into a disease.
Well, and, and like, even with, with all the, the recommendations on, on masking and places that are mandating masking, which Idaho is not, uh, it's masking when practical. Eating and drinking, you can't do wearing a mask.
No, and the bars did, you know, they put up plastic, they separated the bartenders, but that doesn't, that doesn't stop people from crowding a bar to get, to get booze. If it's being, if you're being waited on, that's one thing. But if you have to go up to the bar to get something, yeah, you're gonna get, you're gonna be touching people, you're gonna be running into people. Asymptomatic people will spread it.
Mm-hmm.
Good old Ada County.
And today I had a negative test result that I got.
Whoop, whoop.
Two-hundred-and-seventeen people in Idaho did not.
Ouch.
We have broken the old records.
Every day is like breaking a new record.
And, and one of the things that, that is, is interesting to look at is, I know because of working in a lab and seeing errors and stuff flowing across interfaces, I know the labs get backed up, especially if it's for outpatient stuff and it's being sent to reference laboratories somewhere else. Those get backed up and so you can get multiple days' results all at the same time. So the fourteen-day average really helps, and then seven-day averages as well, really help balance that out.
It's skyrocketed.
Which, yeah, yeah.
It's not a good graph to look at.
No.
Makes me very uncomfortable.
Uh, if it turns around, we are in a second wave. If it doesn't slow down, which there is no indication that it will, then that first thing that happened back in, in the beginning of April wasn't even a wave.
That was the foothill?
That was.
The mountain?
That was a bump. Yeah. Uh, flatten the curve was the goal, not just delay it. Every state has been trying to work through reopening plans. Uh, two weeks ago, Idaho went to phase four.
I like to call it DEFCON four.
Out of four phases. Uh, interestingly, bars were supposed to be in phase four, but they allowed dining rooms and restaurants to open up in phase two. And they quickly figured out that most restaurants have bars. And there wasn't, they weren't able to figure out a meaningful way to distinguish between a restaurant and a bar, so they moved bars up to phase three, which is why Ada County, which is Boise, Meridian, Kuna, Eagle, uh, which has presently two-thirds of all new cases of COVID in the state of Idaho, uh, has moved back to phase three with all bars in Ada County being closed, including the bars in restaurants.
It's that, it's if people are going up to a, to a central area
Uh-huh.
to get something, that's gonna expose anybody who goes into that area.
And if, if the goal is an organized setup where you have spacing that is controlled and run and managed by staff, is the only way you can try to do that safely, you need people to go where they're supposed to go and stay there.
Sit.
So now you can go to a place and get drinks if you are sitting at a table and somebody who works there is bringing the drink to you.
Classy.
While wearing a mask.
Classy shit.
Yeah.
Um, difference between a restaurant and a bar, is there food involved? Is food an option? Now, in some states, that's murky.
Uh.
Oregon.
Oregon and Washington both.
Food.
All bars have food.
So that's, that's meaningless. But in Idaho, no, a bar is a place where it's usually a dance club or.
Tom Grannies.
Not just a gross gathering place where people just drink booze. There's no food involved.
Yeah.
A restaurant, they will have a bar, but they will have sit-down areas and that's good.
And, and a lot of bars do have seating, but they're just going with, if it's a bar, it's closed.
Good.
And if it's in a restaurant, the bar is closed. Uh, so, yeah. Um, the, the rest of Idaho was apparently possibly today going to be going to just business as usual. And Governor Little said that he's tapping the brakes.
Yeah.
Not slamming on the brakes, tapping the brakes.
Yeah, things were not going according to plan.
Nine counties in Idaho have still have no confirmed cases of COVID-19.
Woo, woo.
Some of those counties have literally hundreds of people in them.
Yes, the population is, uh, not huge, but it looks good on paper.
So those teeny-tiny counties with, okay, I'm sure even the smallest have at least a thousand people, but not by, not much more than that. Uh, yeah, a lot of those, some of those don't have any cases at all. So being too draconian, it might be crazy. None of those counties are tourist destinations, because all the tourist spots all have it.
They're mostly mountain.
Or desert.
Or desert.
Wait, Idaho is mountain or desert?
Looking at, yeah. Are you north or south of the Snake River Plain? Idaho jokes, you wouldn't get it.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so, uh, this all, of course, was coincided with a, uh, group of the furthest-right Republicans in Idaho, in the Idaho State Legislature.
Freedom Foundation?
Who are at least aligned with the, the Freedom Foundation, yes. Uh, which is.
Percenters.
Plus.
They call each, whatever they call themselves now, Tea Party. What used to be the Tea Party has turned into some kind of weird racist cult.
Okay, so there was the three percenters, um, led by Ammon Bundy to provide protection for the gathering.
Ammon Bundy was the guy who took over the Malheur County.
Malheur National Wildlife Refuge.
Wildlife Refuge for forty-one days and, uh, didn't die, surprisingly. He still acts up every once in a while. Um, encourages people to bring their guns to quote-unquote "protect."
Yeah.
No, they're not intimidating, they're just protecting the people there.
Uh, now, earlier in the, the pandemic, Ammon Bundy has been getting groups together to, like, do armed protests outside of police officers' homes.
Yeah, we've talked about him a lot this year.
Arresting people.
Uh, he was calling for Easter services to not be canceled.
And held one.
And held one.
He's been doing some, uh, protest, armed protests outside of the governor's house. Uh, they both live in Emmett, so i- it's not hard for him to drive down the street.
To go to somebody's personal address and harass them.
Yeah. Uh, harassing that cop was not cool.
No.
Uh, a- and so they're, they, 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 along with a group called Freedom Man, uh, which is a political action committee somewhat associated with the Idaho Freedom Foundation.
Not officially, though.
But it's not registered with anybody.
Registered, so they're not a hack.
No, they're not.
It's just a group of people who are pooling money to give to politicians without. Ugh, and they won't register. They said straight out, they're not gonna do that, ever.
They think filing the paperwork to be able to do unlimited dark money wouldn't fringe on their freedom too much. So.
Like wearing a mask or being a decent person.
Yeah. So they wanted hundreds or thousands of people to show up for this. Uh, they were hoping to get as many members of the legislature there. Uh, the lieutenant governor, who is.
Batshit insane.
One of them, uh, was ready to show up if any senators were there to gavel in a senate session. Uh, this was all under a, they got two lawyers in Arizona to dig through.
They finally found lawyer, a lawyer somewhere in the United States who will take their money and find some obscure law to make this.
From the Cold War.
Cold War laws, yep. Gotta love them.
So this is a Cold War law that said that in the event of a foreign attack, like a nuclear strike, the legislature could meet in a special session without the governor calling it and without needing a full quorum.
Assuming that ha, you know, everybody's dead.
But the first part of that is a major foreign attack. So they then said that COVID-19 is a Chinese military attack upon the United States.
That was, that wa, that was imaginative. Very creative. I think they earned their money for coming up with that kind of bullshit.
So then.
Lawyers, man. No offense to lawyers out there, but you know, you know.
So then they, they took, took that to, to be like, alright, we're gonna form a session, we need as many people from the legislature to show up. So fifteen members of the House of Representatives.
Nobody showed up.
Fifteen out of seventy.
Yeah.
Not a quorum. You need to have a majority of the members show up for a quorum. Uh, no session was called. They adjourned for the year two months ago, and the governor is the only one allowed to call a special session.
So there, this was just a debacle.
It's literally in the Idaho State Constitution.
They just took a conference room and tried to call it some big political move, but it, it wasn't.
So they met and gathered in as close as they could, nobody wearing any masks, with a crowd of more than two hundred people, many of whom were armed, filling the public galleries on the fourth floor to watch and cheer, also tightly packed together, and the only people in the entire space wearing masks were the media.
Yeah. Um, a little bit of natural selection, little bit of a hope there that, you know, the disease will just wipe these people. No, I wouldn't say that's terrible.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, that's just, it's as, you know, as many times as people have done stupid shit, I'm surprised something worse hasn't happened.
Right.
How is it that, well, it has. All those Easter services that resulted in pastors and people getting really sick.
Oh, the, the, the church that's been gathering unfettered for a while now in Union County, uh, like up in Enterprise in northeastern Oregon, they've had over two hundred cases because basically everybody in the church got COVID.
Yeah. And some people are okay with that. They're like, well, let it just go through the community. And those who live will live on, and those who die, well, okay.
Except, most of the people who are gonna die are old, and, okay, well, that might help clean up the electorate a little bit. They're gonna die soon anyway. If you're talking about people in their eighties, they're the most likely to die. And for younger people, it's more likely that if it does anything, it's going to leave them crippled.
Um, yeah, we're learning more and more about post-COVID syndrome. What, is there an official name for it? No, it's just symptoms that linger in people who've gotten COVID. So there's a lot of respiratory problems, organ issues.
Yeah.
Uh, liver and kidney kind of stuff.
Permanent smelling, possibly permanent smelling loss.
Smelling loss, can you imagine losing smell? Because you didn't wanna wear a mask.
Yeah, yeah.
Like that tick in Texas, making you allergic to meat.
Yeah.
Just little things like that, man, it's crazy.
So this, this gathering, they, they met to issue a proclamation calling for a special session. So the initial media attention this was getting was that, no, this was a special session.
This was gonna be an illegal special session, and I think they actually leaked that out to get the media to show up.
Yeah.
And then they're like, well, of course, there's only fifteen of us, so this isn't a session, but we should have one.
So they issued a proclamation where fifteen members of the House of Representatives are calling on the governor to issue a proclamation, or to call a special session so that they can stop him from being a dictator.
Yes, he's going to call a special session so that you guys can undermine him.
During an emergency.
Yeah. Oh my god. How's everybody else's states doing? Ours is a mess. Ours is a tire fire right now.
Texas is worse.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Houston.
Texas is running out of ICU beds.
Have run out.
Houston's run out. There's still, three percent of ICU beds in, in Texas are still available. Houston's just out. Uh, Arizona's in horrible, horrible shape. Um, South Carolina, Georgia, basically the whole Sun Belt. Uh, you could also call it the Bible Belt.
Huh.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
That's, it's an age thing, probably, not so much a religious thing.
Actually, from the Office of National Statistics for the United Kingdom, a survey of deaths by religious group in England and Wales found that people who reported having no religion were the least likely to die of COVID.
Hmm.
By like twenty percent.
Maybe because they're not cramming into small buildings? And are also more likely to listen to experts?
Uh.
Non-religious experts?
Christians were the next least likely to die. Uh, Muslims were the most likely to die, with Jews, Hindus, and Sikhs falling somewhere in between Christians and Muslims.
Wow.
Um, Jewish males had quite, twice the risk of Christian males, for one, one example of it. Uh, but no religion, like, we're talking a difference of eighty-seven deaths per one hundred thousand males, or excuse me, eighty-point-seven deaths per one hundred thousand males, and forty-seven-point-nine deaths per hundred thousand females for no religion. For Muslims, it's a hundred-and-ninety-eight-point-nine deaths per hundred thousand males, and ninety-eight-point-two deaths per one hundred thousand females.
So can that be linked directly to the types of, um, gatherings that are associated with religions? Or is it more to do with communities?
It's, they tried to, to account for as much as they could.
Okay.
Non-religious people are, yes, the least likely to routinely gather with large groups of people in Britain, uh, or elsewhere. Um, the exception would be bars. Everybody gathers in bars, or excuse me, pubs in, in Britain. Um, except for some of these other groups.
For the religious ones.
Uh, so, but they, they accounted for socioeconomics, they accounted for age, and they found that none of those were significant, uh, distinctions. What would be a fair distinction is that Muslims are more likely to live in insular communities. They are more likely to be recent immigrants. They are most likely to be in poverty. And they are most likely to not trust the government.
Yeah, I get that.
So they're the most likely to die because of those reasons.
Yeah.
And most likely to go ahead and gather regardless of, of the public, uh, pronouncements. Uh, and as a result, yeah, they are four times more likely to die than people who are not religious.
That sucks. I mean, yay for not being, for being non-religious, but, um, that sucks.
Now, there are probably other, other factors at play because of, like, when you're talking about Muslims and Hindus and Sikhs in Britain, you're talking about specific ethnic groups. And everybody else being in different ethnic groups, like religion and ethnicity line up a lot more than they do in a lot of other countries.
Yeah.
And if you look at the US, black people are the most likely to die of COVID-19. Hispanics are second most likely to die. Actually, Native Americans are second most likely to die. Hispanics fall in a little bit behind them.
Attention to the Native Americans. It's so funny, they're talking about, was it, how many, uh, let's see here, how many, how many black people are killed by police? Um, versus Hispanics, versus whites? And I'm like, well, what about the Native Americans? How many, what, what group of population has women disappearing for unexplained murders? Like, nobody ever mentions the Native Americans.
Yeah.
Aw, there is statistic too, guys.
But white people are the least likely to die in the US. And if you look at those numbers in Britain, one of the things that it's saying is that white people are less likely to die than not-white people. There's definitely some systemic racism that is a big factor.
Yeah, and it's not because our immune systems are better.
No, 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 no.
Any kind of biological supremacy here.
No.
It's, yeah, it's poverty and access to medicine. That's a big one.
And how much you trust the healthcare system.
That's true. If you don't trust the healthcare system, then of course you're not gonna go go into the hospital.
Yeah, like, I, I went in to get tested because I had a couple of weird symptoms that came up at the same time, and when the urgent care called back to check up on my when the urgent care called to check up on how my hand was doing from that nasty cut that I should've gotten stitches on, uh, I, as a, I, I mentioned two symptoms that I was having. They're like, you should go get tested. Two mild, seemingly not relevant symptoms, like, you should get tested. Uh, as an employee, I then figured, okay, I'm not allowed in the building right now at work, which I can work from home. Maybe I should call the hotline, so I did, and they're like, yes, go get tested.
Oh my god, he waffled on that so long. And then as soon as he decides to go to get tested, all of a sudden, you, it's not that he imagined things going wrong. Things go wrong. I mean, you start to get headaches or joint pain, but he was getting like back pain, not because of a disease, but because he had been resting in a couch for too long. And a headache was probably due to, I mean, who knows what? I, it's just little things you start, oh my gosh, is this a symptom? Oh my gosh, is this a symptom? Oh my gosh, I'm looking at this checklist and it says I have fifteen out of twenty symptoms. It's like, just, just chill. Just chill. That's not possible, though. You.
Not during a global pandemic.
No, no, I, I, I know. I understand why you reacted the way you did. It's just funny that, that, that is human nature.
Yeah. Uh, and also I used to watch a lot of those, now looking back on them, kind of stupid medical dramas and comedies that were on TV.
Scrubs.
Scrubs, House, uh, Grey's Anatomy. And there's always the big thing on lump the symptoms together, don't split them. So if you have a bunch of things happening, put everything together, what does that paint? Even though it is perfectly plausible to have allergies causing some things and side effects to your antibiotics causing something else.
Yeah.
And a two-year-old causing fatigue.
I mean, this is what, okay, so we had, we had a stomach bug go through, probably a cold.
Yeah.
Um, and then, so COVID-19 scare there. We got a sliced hand with prob, with probable infection.
Yep.
And then we had, what was before that? Um, hoof.
Oh, you wanna go back that far, there was.
Hand, foot, mouth disease.
Hand, foot, and mouth disease, there was, apparently sometimes testicles just get inflamed and suck.
They hurt.
Yeah.
Sometimes, and that happened. Um, Dustin's actually, I think, cost us more money medically than.
You had surgery.
Oh, I forgot the surgery. Yeah, you're right. No, no, it definitely costs more. But you're actually pulling your weight this year. You, you've finally, uh, hit deductible.
Yep. Which actually means that Kylie doesn't have one.
Hooray.
Because we've actually filled up the family deductible.
That sucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Um, in, uh, Utah, at Brigham Young University, someone vandalized the Brigham Young statue.
Oh.
Spray painting the word racist across the base of it.
Oh, okay, on point.
Yep. Uh, a- and Brigham Young University is saying that this caused a thousand dollars in damage.
Right, they're trying to make it a miss, uh, a felony.
Yep.
Versus a misdemeanor. And if you can claim, it doesn't take much to do a thousand dollars worth of damage because it's so expensive to clean that stuff up.
Yeah. Um, now, why is it that they think that Brigham Young was a racist?
A doo.
Well, he once said, quote, "Inasmuch as we believe in the Bible, we must believe in slavery. This colored race has been subjected to severe curses which they have brought upon themselves." "Inasmuch as we believe in the Bible, we must believe in slavery. This colored race has been subjected to severe curses which they have brought upon themselves." End quote.
Yeah, no, total, the whole religion was based on
Yeah.
Huge amounts of racism, it still is. It's just insane. So, uh, yeah, so that, that's, like I said, that's on point.
Oh, it really is. Planned Parenthood of Greater Washington and North Idaho is suing a church.
Oh.
They are suing the church because of how loud their protests are outside of the clinic in Spokane.
Oh man, so are they like breaking the decibel rule for?
What they're doing is they show up and have loud religious services outside of the clinic interfering with treatment and intimidating patients and staff.
Yep.
So they are seeking a injunction to stop the church from holding gatherings of several hundred people
Oh wow.
Outside of the clinic.
Wow. Yeah. That's insane. Do they have a permit for that?
I highly doubt it.
No, the city just lets that slide.
This is Spokane we're talking about.
Yeah, it's not easy being a Planned Parenthood in Spokane. God, those anti-abortion people are just such a jerks.
Oh yeah.
They're just so loud and rude.
Uh, The Tennessean, a newspaper in Nashville, Tennessee, ran a full-page ad that the editor is now saying was horrific.
That.
He's feeling really bad about that being run in his, his newspaper. Uh, but it was a full-page ad predicting that on July 18, 2020, actually, I'll just read you the quote, uh, "We are under conviction to not only tell you, but to provide evidence that July 18, 2020, Islam is going to detonate a nuclear device in Nashville, Tennessee."
Yes, um, Islam.
With a link to a Bible study.
Bible stu-, oh my gosh.
Islam.
Never mind the grammatical error.
Islam is-
Just a thought or idea is going to drop a nuke.
Yeah.
But these people, something about July is making people go nuts.
So this particular group, uh, is a bunch of now former Adventists.
Yeah, they got kicked.
They got kicked out of the church for being too crazy with their, their prophecies, and when you're, you're in an apocalyptic death cult, like the Adventist Church is, uh, you, oh god, yeah, you have to be-
You really have to push it.
You have to really push it to, to actually get kicked out for it. It happens. Uh, but yeah, they, Islam is going to detonate a nuclear device. What's, what's crazy with that is they have a date. They have a specific event in a specific place, but not a specific organization.
You know what, that leaves, that leaves any terrorist attack that happens in the month of July, like, they could get away with murder and blame it on quote-unquote Islam because they prophesized it.
But it would have to, they went, they made the mistake of going too specific on the other parts.
Yeah, that's true.
So it would only be accurate if it was
ISIS?
A Muslim of some kind with a nuclear device, and it would have to be in Nashville on that date.
In the library with the candlestick.
Yeah.
But, uh, no, no, instead, instead, somebody else can set off a bomb and say, "Oh, it was Islam." It's like, no, you guys are just trying to fudge it so that your prophecy comes true. Can't do that, man. I'd be keeping an eye on them, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. Oh man, it's, it's crazy, uh. As a general rule of thumb, any, uh, anybody who's a, was kicked out of a group like this is gonna be way, way up there. Um, and Lori Valor is back in the news.
Yeah, unfortunately. This was the lady whose husband, no, brother, brother died. Oh god, what was it?
She, okay, she divorced her husband, and then he died.
And then he died mysteriously. Uh, then she got married to this Chad guy.
Chad Daybell.
Whose wife had also mysteriously died.
Yep.
Um, their two ki-, or Lori's two kids hadn't been seen in a while.
Yep. Uh- Her brother died.
Her, then her brother died, and then they booked it to Hawaii.
After a judge ordered them to present the children.
Yeah, so they're like, "Present the children," and they're like, "Nope, go into Hawaii. How that happened, I don't know, talk about flight risk."
Mm-hmm.
What the hell? Um, so, was it last week, two weeks ago, they finally, they were using-
Saturday, June, uh, June 20th, so
Yeah.
In the last week.
Uh, they used cellphone information on the brother that had died. Found out where he was, why he was visiting a field in the middle of the night. The field happened to coincide with Chad, the, the, the man's
Mm-hmm.
Residence. So, yeah, definitely, uh, definitely bad.
Well, he-
And, yeah, they found the kids.
He visited that-
Buried in the, the field.
He visited that property four times in September, and two of those visits were-
Middle of the night?
Uh, days after each of the children was last seen.
Yeah.
So, speci- kinda looks like scoping out the site, and then maybe that's where the kids are.
Yeah, so they finally got enough evidence to go in, they found the kids. Um, one was pretty badly mutilated. And, uh, of course, the, the rest of the family's devastated, but this definitely, they're gonna have to exhume the ex-wife and ex-husband of the two and reexamine their deaths, cuz that's pretty, I'm pretty sure, pretty sure those are not of natural causes.
Mm-hmm.
So these guys are probably on death row for killing three adults and two children. All in the name of some crazy fringe Mormon uh, apocalyptic death cult.
Yeah.
They thought in July, uh, the world was gonna end in July. And there was this particular belief within this group that people, people's souls can be lost, and a devil can then, or a demon can then be in that, the person's body? And it's, the only way to get rid of this quote-unquote zombie is to kill it. So apparently this lady thought her kids were zombies. Um, mentioned that to a friend who then reported that to the media, so she probably thought that they were zombies, probably cuz they were standing up for themselves, they were of that age.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, yeah. It sucks. It really does. Everybody's been waiting for the, waiting for the kids to be found. They knew it was gonna end badly, um. At least the grandparents get some closure.
Uh, one of the interesting things that they, they found in the, uh, the records when they're looking at Cox's phone was a text message to his wife about his then-wife, because nobody in this story stayed married to whoever they were married to.
No, yeah.
Uh, that he shot a raccoon and buried it in the pet cemetery.
Yeah, it's like, "Oh, what a crazy afternoon I've had, you'll never believe it." Cover story alibi, not very good. Um, so she probably figured something out, and-
No, it's the investigator looking at it was like, "Wait a minute, he said he shot a raccoon that morning, and raccoons are nocturnal."
Yeah.
So what was he burying?
In the middle of the night.
Yeah, what was he burying in the middle of the night that he shot that morning, and it was the kids?
Yeah. Oh, and he also had, um, debris he was burning out in the field, or in the backyard or something. And one of the bodies was burned. Oh god, it was messed up. This is going to be a movie, or a Netflix special.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Ugh.
This will get its own, probably 50 true crime, two, yeah, true crime podcasts.
Oh yeah.
If it doesn't already have that in their knee.
Yeah. Gruesome stuff. And, uh, yeah, the, the, the guy is a, he self-published a bunch of books about this religious ideology. Um, it, it's, this is, this is the kinda stuff that makes religion dangerous.
Mm-hmm.
Is when people who are unstable go with it, and you know, just murder a half dozen people. Jesus.
Well, they, they had to find God's 144,000.
Oh, oh, is that it?
Yeah.
And it wasn't their kids, apparently.
Nope, those were zombies.
Um, were they finding them in Hawaii?
They probably were gonna try to find some in Hawaii.
I honestly am surprised that they stayed in Hawaii. I figure that she was gonna run.
Um, Chile would've been, or Peru.
Argentina.
No, it's Ecuador.
Oh, Ecuador.
Ecuador doesn't extradite.
Yeah, there we go.
Uh, they also could've gone to Europe, which would not have extradited them because of the chance of getting capital charges in a state that does do executions.
Yeah. Um, and what's weird, okay, so the, so the woman, Lori, she, she got arrested cuz she didn't produce the children. The guy that she's married to didn't get arrested. He sat outside of his property in his car and watched the police.
Mm-hmm.
As soon as they found a human remain, he took off. It's like, uh, where do you think you're running to? It's frickin', was it Rigby, Ryrie, something like, Riggins? I don't know, no, not Riggins.
No.
Um, what are those R towns?
Um.
I think it's Ryrie. Uh, but there's nowhere to run to. Of course he got pulled over right away. Quote-quote, "Traffic stop." Um, god. Can you imagine what was going through his mind as he sat in his car and they're poking around in the place that you know those kids are buried? What, I just, ah, it's messed up.
Yeah.
It's gonna make a great Netflix special.
Oh yeah.
I just feel really, really bad for the grandparents, cuz they tried. They really did. Ugh.
For our final story, a, uh, new report from Humanist International uh, looked at the life of non-religious people in Colombia, India, Indonesia, Malaysia, Nigeria, Pakistan, the Philippines, and Sri Lanka.
Whoa, cool, okay.
And they found they face discrimination and persecution in all of those countries.
Right. I was gonna say, that's a list of countries that, uh, are very well-known for religious persecution. Um, especially if you're non-religious.
Uh-huh.
Those are the countries where if you're listening to us from those countries, please use a, uh, incognito browser, or what is that one called? Uh,
Or Tor, yeah.
Because we don't want you getting killed by your government.
Uh, like, there's, there's Mubarak Bala from the Humanist Association of Nigeria, who is probably dead already.
Probably gone.
Uh, if not, he will be executed for blasphemy soon.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a case in Pakistan where a couple split up and the still-Islamic husband was able to easily get custody of the children from his atheist ex-wife who had to flee the country and seek asylum in Europe to avoid death.
Yeah.
Cuz just getting custody wasn't enough for him. Uh, they have found in most, if not all of the countries they looked at, that the discrimination and persecution is particularly bad for women.
Well, I mean, you could, you could tack that sentence onto anything.
Yeah, you really can. Uh, but yeah, we're gonna go ahead and leave the news there.
Alright.
And I wanna thank our newest patron. Thank you, Mark, for your support. We're gonna leave it there. As a reminder, I am taking next week off. Um, so there will be no episode next week. Uh, it's, it's 4th of July. Um, do happy things, or protest, or escape. But stay safe, wash your hands, wear a goddamn face mask, and remember, not all those who wander are lost. Thank you for listening to another episode of Atheist Nomads. You can find show notes and contact information at atheistnomads.com. Follow us on Twitter at @atheistnomads, and like us on Facebook at facebook.com/atheistnomads. Please subscribe to the show on iTunes, Stitcher, or your podcatcher of choice, and while you're there, feel free to leave us a review. The music is courtesy of Sturdy Fred. Until next time, this has been The Atheist Nomads.